Do you give me a thumbs up when you're ready? You're speedy. Good evening, I'm gonna call this meeting to order on June 16th of the Sutter Creek City Council. Erin, can you please take a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Reardon.
Here.
Councilmember Cirque.
I'm here, I'm attending via Zoom through the Just Cause capability. I'm attending to the health of and concerns of a family member here on the East Coast.
Mayor Gonsonman.
Here.
Councilmember Swift.
Here.
Councilmember Feist.
Here.
Can you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I'll open the public forum this night if there is anybody on Zoom. They are able to participate in that way. The public is permitted to address the city council on items not appearing on the agenda. Comments may not exceed five minutes in accordance with state law. However, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The city council may respond to statements made or questions asked or may request staff to report back at a future meeting on the matter. Would anyone care to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Chief O'Connell?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Hello, council, hello, everybody. I just wanted to take a quick moment to let you know some kind of good news for the police department. In 1980, Mothers Against Drunk Driving was initiated based upon a tragic event. And since then, there's been a lot of legislation, a lot of action towards reducing drunk driving. And that's taken place over a number of decades. Here in town, we have an officer who's gonna be awarded for getting a whole lot of drunk drivers off of our streets. Daniel Rigo is gonna get an award in July for getting a whole bunch off our streets. So I just wanted to make sure you all knew what he's doing out there and how it's making us all a whole lot safer. So I want to congratulate Daniel in front of all of you, and if you see him, give him a thumbs up. Thank you very much.
Jim, will there be a ceremony or presentation of some kind?
There's a dinner in, I think, Citrus Heights. But if I have occasion to come talk to council again, I'd be happy to bring it up. I just wanted to tell you in the moment what was happening because it's great news. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Daniel Rigo.
Yes, Daniel.
Hey, Jim, I had a, I went on a drive along with Daniel last week or the week before, and I really enjoyed it. And he's a terrific officer. I learned a lot from him and appreciated everything he was doing. Yeah.
There's no one on Zoom wishing to address the council at this time.
Thanks, Erin, I already forgot.
Yeah, we actually don't let that, we don't let people just spend on Zoom.
Well, we do tonight.
Oh, got it. You're ahead of me there.
Yep, okay. Tom, your turn, city managers report.
Quick manager's report. Little personal photo here is my nephew and his wife, they were in town this weekend. He's from New Zealand, and he really enjoyed Sutter Creek. So some updates. On Thursday, we're having our ARSA meeting. One of the topics, just wanted to let the council know is Henderson underdrain repair update. So we were delayed about a month because of the Castle Oaks situation. We can definitely, it looks like we can definitely complete the construction this year. We had had some indication that we are still waiting on one approval, which is CDCR. Everything else is ready to go. After the ARSA meeting, we can, we'll make a decision on whether we go this year or next year, and we'll sign the contract. We've gotten some indications that we might be likely to get a grant. We got some different information last Friday, so I'm trying to resolve that before the ARSA meeting.
CDCR has to approve the work for Anderson Drain?
Yeah, it's part of our lease that if we do any major projects that they have to review and approve.
Is there any risk in putting it off until next year?
It's just whether we, if we got the grant versus spending out of pocket, you know, it would, it would, we would have the 681,000 and we'd get a grant for another 681,000. So it's a big swing. We, and again, we'll talk to the ARSA board with all the details, just wanted you guys to be aware.
In terms of making that final decision, however, Tom, is that something you're gonna bring back to us?
I wasn't really planning to.
I'm just a little concerned about the decision about whether to spend our own money this year or if you get more information about that grant.
Yeah, I mean, it's the ARSA money, I mean, obviously, most of it's from Sutter Creek. I'll just share that we had thought the grant writer had indicated that she thought we were highly likely to get it. I still think we qualify. Looks like she made some mistakes and we are not complete right now. We didn't really apply for the right grant. So that's the information I'm trying to get an update on by Thursday.
Gotcha.
So if it doesn't look at all likely or it seems sketchier, I assume we're gonna proceed. You know, the risks are whether we'd have to rebid and the price could go up.
Yeah.
Those sort of, and we could say, think we'd likely to get the grant but then not get the grant. So worst case, you know, we end up paying more next year. The best case, we don't pay anything, we, and then middle cases, we just proceed as we've planned. So it's really a question about kind of risk reward.
Remind me, ARSA budgeted for half of it last year, and then we voted to lend ARSA the money to do the other half. So it is at this point, ARSA.
And the ARSA budget would pay back the rest, basically. So again, we have our RFP out there for the new wastewater plant. We're starting this week, we're having some confidential meetings to answer more questions from companies that are interested in bidding. So that's, that's moving along. We also signed a weed abatement contract last week, so getting all that in order, working on notices and letters and kind of the process that we'll use to do enforcement this year.
So that's a contract with a, with someone who does abatement?
Yeah, it's the same company that does it for Jackson. Jackson did a search and had a hard time finding companies, so we just, we looked around a little bit, but we pretty much piggybacked on what they're doing.
What is the deadline date for people?
We're still working through the timeline, so, I mean, it's probably gonna be late summer before anything would happen. And again, we're using the process where the fire district will do multiple inspections and then they'll give us a list of the worst people, and then our timeline would start in terms of giving notice, seeing if they react, and then, you know, this firm isn't gonna come out for one yard, we'd have to batch them up and they would come out and do a bunch of work.
I noticed that the, the fire station, they've already posted on vacant properties warnings. So that's, that's at least got the ball rolling.
Yeah, they definitely started, they usually go two or three times, I think, and try to get people to comply. And I met with Dominic last week, he said that people have been really responsive this year already.
It looks that way to me, walking around town every day.
Yes.
I see a notice go up and three days later, I see the thing cleared.
Yeah.
So.
And then the last one, thanks, Public Works. We had some complaints about the doggy station we had put on Main Street being in front of a store. And some Public Works very nicely moved it to the parking lot where we used to have the hand sanitizer station.
Yeah.
So we got a nice thank you from the store owner on that one. Just some other.
What happened to the hand, the hand sanitizer?
I think it went into storage, probably.
Great.
Yeah. I'm sure it's in the pile underneath the auditorium. We did launch the new financial system, so we've been using it for a couple of weeks now. Again, thanks to Mason for that. He put in a lot of time in addition to his regular job. He is out on vacation this week. But we are still working on utility billing and payroll and looking to launch utility billing July 1st. And then I wanted to highlight here, Jim is talking to the county sheriff. They have a request to install flock cameras, which are intelligent license plate reading cameras within the city limits. And, you know, typically, a city would install its own cameras. Given our financial situation, we don't currently have plans to do that. The only issue which I raised with Jim is there's, you know, once they're installed, there's a lot of data sharing. They can go on, and I've seen like reports of states with like anti-abortion laws actually requesting data from other states to be able to track people, you know, for local laws.
What's the motivation for having the cameras installed in town?
Again, I think being able to follow people, if there's a person of interest, you can actually with these cameras, track them from an event happening, you know, in Jackson, through Sutter Creek and, you know, out into even other areas, even probably to Sacramento or other places where these cameras are installed. So. And then we are having the second finance ad hoc meeting tomorrow. The swimming pool opened and it's been, I hear, and getting a lot of use already. We also have the I and I projects starting, all the, all the paperwork's in order there. And then, I think I might have shared some of these last time, but, you know, we've been, again, continuing to be more active on social media as well as things that we think tourists would look at, like TripAdvisor and Yelp. And then I just want to reiterate, and we're advertising on Facebook, but we do have a opening on the design review committee. So if any of you guys know a designer or an architect or somebody who's interested in historic preservation, let me know.
I want to go back to this, that flock cameras. Is, who has the final decision whether they're actually going to be installed and who absorbs the price?
I mean, I think, I think we would decide at a staff level, but let's have Jim have his meeting and we'll see, see what the county sheriff says. I don't know if you want to add anything, Jim, since you're here. Okay. Yep, and then we have our 4th of July party. We actually have an interesting music act, it's a steel drum DJ guy is gonna be there. Also have some ice cream trucks and working on a food truck should be a lot of fun. And then we, the county fair, and then we get into August and September. I would say, I think the October events, a lot of, a lot of people are really planning ahead this year with their event permits, which is great. And we have the car show in October. It looks like the witch's walk is extremely popular. We've been told that there are groups from the Bay Area planning to come on buses. They've got a lot of events for, for kids planned this year. So watch for that in October.
Tom, do you need anything from us for the pool party?
It'd be great if you guys can come, but not really.
We'll be there.
And then, I am recommending that we, we all plan to have a special meeting in two weeks on June 30th. We'll see how the budget goes tonight, but I expect even with the MOUs, we might want to have a short meeting. And then I'm also suggesting that we cancel one meeting in July and August, the first meeting of the month. I think we did that last year. And so we would meet on July 21st and August 18th. And you guys can let me know if that's the issue or you're good with it. And that's it.
I won't complain.
Any questions for Tom? Anybody on Zoom, Erin?
Nope.
Okay. Approval of the minutes from June 2nd?
Unless somebody else has any comments or concerns, I didn't, and I would move to approve the minutes.
For a second.
We're gonna have to do a roll call favor, or roll call vote, all in favor?
Okay. Councilmember Reardon.
Aye.
Councilmember Cirque.
Aye.
Mayor Gonsonman.
Aye.
Councilmember Swift.
Aye.
Councilmember Feist.
Aye. Okay, and why we're all here in front of this packed house? The administrative agenda is the budget?
Yeah, I guess just a few comments. So this is our annual exercise, this is a draft budget. There's not a lot of extra projects or things in this budget this year. Most of what's there is not, not really optional. So a, as normal, there's the budget itself, there's a resolution of the budget, and then there's a calculation of the state on the annual appropriations limit, which is also there. And, you know, we are continuing with the format that we used last year. We're showing a lot of the ARSA detail within the city's budget. Where in the past, it was kind of just a black box of expenses to ARSA and payments from ARSA. We are, you know, we did get approval for the 112,000 from the Board of Supervisors for the Bryson bathrooms. So those are in the budget. We are continuing to benefit from a LEAP grant on some of our planning costs. The, the Measure P money is basically being reserved as the Oversight Committee suggested. And, you know, we're, we're trying to build up reserves and wastewater for the new plant. There's a few critical repairs in there. And same thing with kind of other capital projects. Last, last meeting, we did talk about the police cameras. Jim Sergeant Brewer did do some shopping, looking around for a purchase instead of a lease option. Those tended to have less features, be more expensive. And again, we continue to see these cameras, you know, break over time. So they, they basically strongly recommended that we stick with the lease option because we, we get redaction features, we get cloud storage and security. And if the cameras break, they just send us a new camera.
How many, how many camera totals are we talking about?
I'm sorry, say it again, Julie.
How many cameras total in the, in the package?
Would there be one?
There are six cameras.
Six.
Yeah, so I'm happy to answer questions. I do have the spreadsheet that I can put up if, if you guys have detailed questions.
I, I think that this would be positive projections in terms of projecting revenue. From what I read, it said the revenue growth is looking at a potential 2% increase, property tax 3% increase, sales tax a 2.5% and the TOT a 1%. That, that should fare well, but does, do those numbers run kind of with what we've had in the last couple of years, since the COVID recovery?
Yeah, so again, if you remember when we had the long range financial forecast, we talked about a lot of the assumptions we were using this year, and that's, we think those are conservative and we just pulled, pulled those over into the budget for this year.
Okay.
So in regards to, she has brought up the, that 2.5% sales tax increase. Is that, when you say 2.5% increase there, are you, are we just looking at our pre Measure P sales tax, or does that 2.5% increase reflect the Measure P?
No.
I didn't think it did.
Yeah.
So we just talked, so we're comparing apples to apples. It's not skewed by that Measure P.
Right, no, it would be a lot more.
Right, yes, okay, and if.
I got something on that, though, Jim, just because, on our, I was looking at our third quarter budget projections and Mason was making an assumption that we were only gonna come in at 85% of budget for sales tax. So are we budgeting that we're gonna come 2% over what we didn't hit last year? Or 2% over what we actually brought in?
I think, are you sure about, I thought he was saying we were 85% in the third quarter.
I got it here somewhere, let, let someone else go and I'll find it.
Yeah.
Oh, here you go, I found it. This year's sales tax performance is not as high as we'd like to be optimistic that we can make up some of the lag as we head towards a busier season, but I'm anticipating that we will likely be around 85% of our budgeted revenues for sales tax this year. That was April.
Right, okay, we'll make a note, we'll go back and double check.
Yeah, let's make sure.
Yeah.
I would think, though, I mean, if it was April, like January to March are kind of slower, and then March till now go pretty hot, and then summer's bad, and then mid-September to the, like, the.
Want that to be up there?
I know.
The fourth quarter, so that kind of trends with what those.
I think he was saying, though, I think the comment is that at that time, he was estimating by year's end, we would still only be 85%.
Comparing like those two quarters.
For the whole fiscal year.
Yeah, so I'll double check on that.
It's important to, to make sure.
Yeah, sure.
As the fiscal year completes, that we're really where we are. I have so many things. So, Tom, overall, the revenue in the general fund is increasing by 12.2%. And in the general fund, expenses are also increasing exactly 12.2%. So is this a function of how we balance the budget? That's a question. Whenever I see things like that, it's a, it's a little bit odd unless we're backing into a number.
So yeah, good question.
So that's.
And again, a lot of this has been coming together in real time, so I apologize if some of these numbers I'm showing don't match exactly what you guys got earlier. Right now, in the general fund, we, we continued to find a couple of errors, I think, move some things around. We're showing about 292,000 in the, in the, in the green.
Right.
So it's.
But your statement in your letter says it's like 100, we, we, we came in, you know, 100 net profit, so to speak. And we're gonna apply that this year in order to balance the budget.
From last year's excess, but then we're showing an excess this year as well.
I highlight, I highlighted that statement too on page two of your report. I didn't exactly know what it meant. Under discussion, it says actual revenue exceeded budget and also exceeded actual expenses by $100,000. We're using those funds to balance the budget. Could you elaborate on that?
Yes, so.
If I can suggest maybe, I, I wanted the same thing, and I think what might be helpful is if you go to, you could just walk us through, starting, do you know what I'm looking for, Dan? Where there's a third column that has the reserves, here we go, on page.
11 to 54 or something.
19 of the packet?
Does it have a page number on the budget?
Page two.
Page two.
Page two of the budget.
19 of the pack.
Yeah, look on the bottom of the, has numbers.
Yeah, page two of the budget.
Yeah.
If you can maybe walk us through what that means, that would be helpful. And I don't know, we kind of blew through it, so I will, at, at some point in this conversation, you mentioned on page four of the staff report that we, the budget plans for COLAs, and I'd like to know what those suggested COLAs are.
Yeah. I can ask that question first, so we always in the budget, just plug in 2.5%, and that's built into the budget, it's kind of a.
So 2.5% for each and every employee of the city.
And we can, we can talk about, we can go into those in detail in the closed session.
Fine, yeah, that's fine.
So, there's a couple of things going on, we have quite a bit of wastewater activity coming up in the next year. So we did assume that a fair amount of my time and Dan's time, and, you know, more extra engineering expense and, and even, I think, some of Mason's time, you know, a lot of us are gonna be really focused if we start a $40 million project for a new wastewater plant. And so, you know, looking at this page two, like I said, we're, we're showing again, trying, again, trying to have a pretty conservative budget here, about a $300,000 positive in the general fund. We, on the wastewater fund, it's also about $300,000 excess that would go to reserves. The street fund is in the negative, and there were still some old street funds that had negative balances. We tried, we, last year, if you remember, we combined a lot of general fund accounts, we cleared out a lot of negative balances that's just been being carried, getting there on the street funds as well. So we are, we are suggesting that we do some really critical street projects. We're using about 180,000 from reserves for that. The lighting district, again, it's an old district, we can't change it, it's being subsidized by the general fund to about $20,000.
Is that, is that like a nasim, is that just a perpetual going to be a reserve withdrawal every, every year?
And if you think about it, you know, the rest of the street lighting is town is paid out of the general fund, so Crestview's contributing $2,600 a year towards the streetlights. And then you can see the projected fund reserve totals on the bottom there. You know, so we have some operating reserves, these, these are really important, you know, depending on cash flow and, and changes in the market conditions.
Can you go back up before you get down there?
Yeah.
And there's to the side, as the reserves remaining, 2.2 million, 4.4 million, 70% and 100%. Can you explain what that means?
Yeah, so that's the percent of the annual budget.
What is the percent of the annual budget?
Well, each of those, and again, these numbers may be, I'm confident about the, the core numbers, some of these side note numbers, because I'm looking at the 100%, it looks like it's, you know. you know, uh, fourteen thousand off. But um, and again, on the wastewater reserve, the reason we have such large reserves is we are planning to use that money for the wastewater plant construction, so we're trying to build those reserves up.
Sure, I, I got you, but so for the general fund, you're saying we have two point two eight, or sorry, two point two million basically in reserves, and we're going to add another two hundred ninety-two thousand.
Until we get to the closed session tonight, but yes, approximately.
Because in the general fund, the fund balance is down this year by fifteen percent of what it was two years ago.
Right.
So I know a lot of that is manipulation and stuff like that where we've.
Well, not really. I mean, we did a lot of projects last year, right, and we did, we did spend down some reserves. So when you look at these, this is the total numbers of, for all the general fund accounts, add it all together, that, there's no manipulation, right, it's just summing those up. So some were positive, some were negative.
Right, I didn't mean anything negative by that. I meant you had moved certain funds in or out of the general, or zeroed them out, or that type of thing, so I.
I guess what I'm trying to say is the funds that we combined were all general fund funds.
Okay, they were already in there.
They were just kind of like savings accounts with labels, but they, what we try, what we're trying to get to is having true like enterprise funds, which is money that can't be touched, is for that purpose. General fund funds, you know, they could be used for anything in the general fund. Um, we are trying to indicate the intent. So again, we do have, you know, a capital reserve and an operating reserve. But if, you know, if it really was a, a major catastrophe, any of those reserves could, general fund reserves could be used.
What is the, you're, you're missing a label under Fund Ninety-Six, it's got seven hundred and twenty-three thousand in it.
Yeah, that is, I don't know why it didn't print out, um, that is the measure P. Five quarters of measure P.
So, Tom, I, I did, you know, right or wrong, and, and correct me, but, you know, I, I just did a bunch of compare kind of things, you know, from two years ago, actual, to where, what our proposed budget is. And unless I'm mistaken, in the general fund, it indicated a five percent increase in planning, twenty-three percent increase in engineering, three and a half percent in city council, forty-seven percent in city manager, forty-five percent in public works, marketing down twenty-seven percent, city clerk down twenty percent, central services up forty-seven percent, legal up twenty-four.
Why don't we, why don't go over those one at a time, because they have different means, no, I, that's a good question, so.
I just, I just, I wanted to form this, and then, and then, before we get into the detail on each of these, just to share with you kind of where my mind is here. So I'm looking at all that, and then I see the allocation charts that say, well, a lot of your time is over here, but some of it's over here. And so that's confusing, because I have to go in three places to put all you, like your stuff together, or city clerk, or anybody. And so I'm giving you this feedback, because, you know, I know this year we were pushed, and you were pushed, to get it done. So, number one, getting it four days before the meeting isn't good enough. We can't do this again. There's too much important information in here, that if we're really of a mind to study it and understand it, and ask critical questions, and analyze it, and discuss it, we can't do that.
Yeah.
Like this.
And that's why, again, I think we should meet on the thirtieth.
Yeah.
You could use tonight to give feedback, we can modify it, come back.
Okay.
But let's go back, because there really is a lot of differences in those different things.
Very good.
So why don't you start the top?
There's a twenty-three percent engineering increase in the general fund from two years ago.
Which page are you on?
Seventeen fifty-four, maybe, in the budget document.
So we did, we did do a lot of projects last year. Um, engineering costs did go up a lot. And if you look, I, I believe they're coming back down again in this draft budget, because we're not going to do a lot of projects. We also had a lot of cost recovery for engineering, so when it's a um a development or something with a permit, those costs are recovered from fees. But with Oremadre, Eureka Road, um, those all required like W G A time.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to square that with, I thought that I read a comment somewhere that, and you, I think you just said engineering costs are going to be going down, but what I'm saying is that it, they're up twenty-three percent from two years ago.
Okay, but I, I think what I saw is it spiked last year, and they're coming down from last year, but they're, you, you could be right, they're twenty percent up from two years ago.
Yeah. And then, you know, the other, the other big ones are forty-seven percent city manager.
Yeah, so that one, we, we transferred uh position Jody that was in the finance budget before. That's now in city management slash administration, so, you know, part of that is me, but part of it is actually having two people instead of one person.
Right.
There's also a contingency there that I want to talk to you about uh in the closed session.
Fifteen thousand bucks or something like, yeah. But um, I guess I, I hear that. The general comment again about that is, I understand during the year why we make these changes and stuff, but the feedback I want to share is that it makes it nearly impossible to do comparative analysis year to year.
Yeah.
Because it's no longer apples to apples.
Right, so there was some restructuring since I came on board.
Yeah.
Again, I think it makes sense for Will not to be in the finance budget, so that, it's pretty significant. Yeah, it's all of his benefits, everything, right, just moved over.
Right. But I guess that, that, that whole, well, let's continue this, so, city manager, you explained that, public works. Um, and these are personnel costs, forty-five, I think forty-five percent over two years.
So what you're talking about is just personnel, not services and supplies?
I don't know if this particular one, I combined them or not.
Okay.
But, sorry, I didn't make that note.
Yeah, I think public works is um, and again, if you go to the uh, I think the general fund, public works tab, it'll give you a comparison year to year. Obviously, again, we added Dan a year ago, or a year and a half ago. And then, you know, the, they were under an existing M O U, so all those things kicked in.
Right.
And then again, I think, I think we had a pretty active year in terms of projects. Um, I do anticipate we're going to slow down this year versus kind of what, what was happening last year.
Oh, so, so here you go, Claire, to clarify Claire's question about what was it? So on page nineteen of fifty-four, it shows the overall increase in personnel costs from two years ago in the general fund was twenty-five percent. The overall increase in services and supplies is thirty-three percent, so it's hard for me to reconcile all that and think everything is fine. Because those are big numbers. And I, and part of it, Tom, is, and again, I don't, I'm not saying.
This is a good sheet to look at. Are you talking about public works?
I'm talking about in general, on page nineteen of fifty-four. Right? If you look at.
Hey, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm really struggling with the page numbers, I need to look.
And so I'm looking at nineteen.
It's the page number at the bottom of the page.
Fifty-four. I'm seeing wastewater funds.
But it's this, it's this, it's the culmination of the general fund, total personnel services, one point two, two years ago, and proposed one point six nine seven. It's a one, two, three, four column, half a page at the end of the general fund.
Yes, you're actually going three years back, so you're looking at twenty-two, twenty-three. This budget is twenty-five, twenty-six.
I'm going to ask for the page number again, because fifty-four.
Yeah, I have it up on the screen here.
This is combined, no, this is combined.
Yeah, so just uh, so twenty-two, twenty-three, that was Amy Gedney's last year. Twenty-three, twenty-four was Sandy, Sandy's year, and then twenty-four, twenty-five was my year.
Great clarification, thank you, I'm sorry, I, I, I flubbed that one.
But again, it's a good, this is a good sheet to look at, because it breaks it down by department.
Yeah, it does.
So again.
Each and every one, but again, it's only as allocated in the general fund.
It's right, but it, so, and if you look at um personnel between twenty-three and twenty-four, again, uh, we added a couple of the staff in that year. You know, subservice supplies went up about a hundred thousand. Capital outlay went out quite a bit, went up quite a bit. Um, and then if you look at last year versus this year, you know, I think it's uh much more modest, it's a fifty thousand dollar increase on services. Um, it's a decrease on services and supplies, and a decrease on capital.
Yeah, it's, it's very modest on the uh, I see, from projected last year to this coming year, I see what you're saying.
Yes, we called it projected, it's, it's close to actual, it's just not quite done.
Yeah.
Right, so if uh, you know, the rest of, it's, I think it's from the third quarter forecast.
Okay.
You know, the other ones you asked for, um, marketing is pretty much flat from last year. There were, again, back three years ago, there was the visitor center, there was a lot of um what I would call public works, beautification projects that were put into the marketing budget. Central services is primarily our insurance, and that has gone up that much. I mean, it's almost entirely that.
Is that, does that include liability?
Yes, that's what I mean.
Which is the five hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Which is a big number.
Right.
I wonder what, Jim, this goes to our discussion about the, the police budget, and, and I'm not suggesting we don't have a police department, but if we didn't, how much would that be reduced by, I wonder?
Yeah, we can talk about it tomorrow, but the uh, the Risk Management Association didn't think it would. They actually said the opposite, which is they've had cities outsource PD and it's not gone down.
Fair enough, fair enough. Yeah, that number jumped out at me, that uh.
In regards to that, I was, I had a question about that also.
Yep.
Five hundred thirty thousand for insurance. Do we have options to hire deductibles or, or anything that could lower our costs on that?
We keep looking, again, I think we are in a really good um pool with the other cities. I, I've talked to city managers that are in different pools, and they pay more. Every year we look, like, so a lot of our vehicles are in, they have a low, low-cost vehicle insurance versus brand-new car insurance, so we're, we're paying less. You know, again, we're, we're up to ensure, you know, all the infrastructures, the biggest thing, the buildings, the um treatment plant. And then there's, you know, liabilities for injury, workers comp.
But that includes the workers comp, too?
Yeah, it does.
Which isn't cheap.
Right.
Yeah. That just seems like unsustainable insurance.
Right.
At every level, whether it's your home or, or a city. I, I, I'm still not sure that I got my question answered about the statement that our revenue exceeded uh by a hundred thousand, and we're using those funds to balance the budget.
Yeah, it's, I admit, it's a confusing statement. I mean, those funds, technically, they go into a reserve, and then if you look at that page, page two, I think th, this is, again, is a, I think, a good summary of the use of reserves. So we're not using any reserves this year for the general fund or the wastewater fund. We are using reserves for, for the street, streets. So you can think of that a hundred thousand as going into reserves, and then if it, if it needed to be spent, it would be showing up here.
Okay, it actually shows we're taking two hundred thousand out of reserves. So did we come in a hundred under expenditures and over in revenue, making two hundred?
So can you see these numbers? I think they are different than what's in your packet.
Two hundred and two on the firm reserves fund.
No, firm reserves is zero, and re, revenue minus expenses is three hundred, so we would be adding three hundred to reserves.
Sure, so back to Jim's statement, though, I'm looking for the one hundred.
Yeah, I'm saying, ignore the staff report. If, if it's, if that's confusing you, just think of it as going into reserves, and then this budget is showing you what's being pulled out of reserves.
Okay, so the, what we're using from the reserves, though, are capital projects. We're not paying salaries out of our reserves.
That was what I was wondering.
That, that is correct, but again, or if we needed to, we could. I mean, there, there are operating reserves, and there are capital reserves, and you, you could pull salaries out of a operating reserve.
Well, that's a death spiral. If you got to borrow money to pay salaries, you're going to be in, that, you can't sustain that for very long.
Yeah.
Great.
So that's not my point.
I mean, so again, we are trying to match um labor costs to ongoing revenues, and that's what you're saying, you can't spend like one-time money on ongoing costs. And as we talked about in kind of multiple meetings, this is what I would call a pretty conservative budget, just given uncertainty with, with like you guys have said, sales tax, property tax. Um, if we go into a recession, we don't want to be in a situation where we have to lay people off because we didn't plan for it. So, I really think um with this budget, if we see the economy going really strong, we could come back to you guys with budget amendments and potentially be a little less conservative, and maybe fund a couple of projects that got cut. You know, there were, there were a lot of, weren't that many, but there were a few requests that didn't get funded in this budget. So, I mean, hopefully that helps, and again, there's no pressure for you guys to approve this tonight, if you just want to give feedback. We're happy to come back with.
Well, I think that there's a, yeah, I, I have a major question about the sales tax assumptions, you know, I want to know two percent over what and why, especially if that doesn't include measure P, because we underperformed this year, I believe, and we're all talking about the economy going down, so I think we should.
Yeah, so I could tell you.
Figure that again.
And again, I appreciate the comment about getting it four days before this meeting. You know, like I said, Mason got really slammed with a lot of stuff, he and I, I, I ended up doing a lot of the budget. You know, I, I had told him about the county, county budget, and I think at one point, he, he got nervous about that and pulled some things back, and then he and I looked at it, um, kind of where things are, so I think the revenue assumptions have been scrubbed fairly well. They may have changed since that long run for, long-range forecast, so we can double check.
Well, I think, you know, so we could see what, what we budgeted two years ago, what actually came in, what we budgeted this year, what came in.
I think that's, I think you can see that in here. But I'm just sharing with you, like, he, he was, he was pretty much at a hundred percent and a little more, and then I told him about the county, and then he hacked it back, and then as we worked over time, I think we've seen some revenues coming in, so we bumped it back up.
You, you made the comment, I hope, I wonder if I misunderstood, that some of the numbers that you're presenting tonight are different than what we have in our packet?
There may be some, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, so if you see some things, I think.
Well, can we, would there be the ability far before June thirtieth to be able to get the actuals?
Of course.
Correct number set that we can all work off of, that would be?
Yeah.
I'm not sure we can see that in here, Tom, because we, there is where we see revenues actual and projected from the last couple of years, but it just says taxes, it's not sales tax versus, well, I think where I'm looking, which is page thirty of the packet, and I don't know what page of the budget.
This page, right, page thirteen? Yeah, so if you look, total revenues, we're forecasting uh about two hundred and fifty thousand more than last year.
Right, but i, in trying to understand why, and if we agree with that forecast, um, if they were broken down specifically, for instance, sales tax.
There's a breakdown on page thirty-one of the packet.
So again, we, we're seeing a, a five hundred thousand dollar increase in sales tax. That's including measure P money.
Measure P money is in there, Claire.
Measure P money is, is more than that difference.
So measure P is on the top with the revenue, and then, and then. and then we take out the expenditures and come up with the two hundred and ninety-two, right? But then measure P, I believe, appears down here in the reserves, so how does that fly? It's like double counting it?
No, so, so the revenue and the expense are here. These reserves, these are balances, they're, they're not additive to the stuff above the dotted line.
But if we bring in three point two and spend two point nine, how are we putting seven hundred and twenty-three right there?
Into measure P reserve.
Into measure P reserves. That math doesn't work. So am I asking that, do you understand what I'm asking?
I, I get what you're saying.
Because we are not spending.
Two point nine eight five. Yeah, we are.
Right.
Right, Tom, so total revenues are your three point two. Total real spend is two point nine.
Right.
Including all real stuff.
Including measure P.
No.
There's, we're not spending anything on measure P, but yes.
No, 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 but it's included in. Correct.
And that leaves a balance of two ninety-two.
Right.
Now, but we're, we're showing down the next one, that all those measure P revenues are actually in a reserve account. How can we fund that reserve account if we've used those funds to pay for the expenses? Which we have according to this document.
Thanks, Dan, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I needed to check on that. I see what you guys are saying. I'm looking at the other reserve totals. So if you look, the total fund balance on reserves went from one point five to one point eight, which is.
It's like that.
About that rate, it's about that three hundred thousand dollars.
Exactly.
So.
Which isn't measure P.
It's everything. So I think, I think what we did is we decreased the general fund reserve. Decrease, we got, we got rid of the general operating reserve, which general fund and general operating were kind of the same thing. Are you looking here at the bottom?
But you, you hear what you're saying. It, it, it sounds like what we did is we changed some things to make it work, but we're saying we're gonna put all those measure P funds away.
We are. Exactly, that's exactly what I'm saying. So these funds, zero, one, thirty-nine, ninety-five, they had these numbers, but they're really all just general fund reserves.
Right.
So in our new financial system, we're actually getting, we did a whole new chart of accounts, so we're getting rid of a lot of these. They are, again, general fund money, they're not, they're not being like
Restricted.
shuffled around in any secretive way. We're just combining them.
But Tom, if your revenue is three point two and your real expense is two point nine.
Yeah, stay, stick with me, Dan. So we had one point five in total reserves. We have about three hundred thousand in profit.
Right.
So we're showing one point eight in total reserves at, at the end of this budget.
Right.
We are reserving seven hundred and twenty-three thousand for measure P. We took other general fund reserves and decreased those.
And so what I'm saying, I, I hear you. I hear what you're doing, but to me, that's manipulating the books just to do a, to make it, you know, look better. It's not, we're not really funding, let me finish. We're not really funding our expenditures with our revenues. We're funding them by moving reserves over to make up enough for measure P to be able to point to it and say there's seven hundred and fifty bucks there.
No, not at all. We're increasing our reserves by three hundred thousand dollars. And we are naming reserves that we actually want to track and we want to track measure P going forward, so we can report on it. The difference between general fund reserve, general fund, general fund reserve and general operating reserve, those are just names that had no real difference. So I guess what I would say is we are trying to create, um, categories that are actually meaningful to report on. So does that make sense? It's.
No.
Are you saying?
And if you, if you take the one point eight in total fund balances, but you take out the measure P because those really are pretty restricted, you're actually reducing your total fund balance from last year.
So you. No, no, we're not. And measure P is not, is not restricted. Measure P is a general fund reserve. But we have a commitment to the voters and we want to report on it separately.
So it's not an accurate total fund balance of one point eight if those, that seven hundred and twenty-three thousand for measure P is being included in it?
It's not in there, is it?
It is.
Yes.
Which line?
Right here on the screen.
One line number right under measure P.
Yeah, so it's not, uh, I'm trying to understand the communication, like where I'm. So our actual reserves, you can think of as, uh, measure P was new money.
Right.
And it's a year, you're in a quarter of seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
Right. I guess what I'm saying, Tom, is if, if we really, if our revenue, real revenue, not counting measure P. See, we're counting measure P up on that top part as real revenue.
It is.
And then we're knocking expenses against that. If I guess in my mind, what I would expect is if real, if real revenue paid for all those expenses and measure P netted seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, our reserves would go up by seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. Not three hundred and something. It did that because you depleted other reserve accounts, reduced them and just moved them into the measure P reserve account. And I understand, I, I think what, what you've said. But I think that gives a false sense of security. I, I don't think it's reflective.
Well, here though, isn't the real revenue, um, I don't have the page numbers of the budget, I just have the packet ones. But on the top of thirty is measure P in that revenue list? I don't.
It's in the two point six.
Correct.
Under taxes, the very first item.
It's just grouped into that.
Yeah, this, this here includes measure P money. It's all in there. It was expenses, it leaves that much.
Okay.
So, but what Tom's done is he's reduced this from that to that and found a way to take that three hundred and the difference between that and that and a couple of other things and create a real reserve account, which I understand the spirit of that is right on the money. I'm just not so sure it's reflective of a true fiscal performance capability of the city.
Well, it just shows we're spending what Jim said five minutes ago, you know, reserves to fund.
Correct.
City.
Right, it's not, it's not just an accounting thing.
You know, because our, you know, we, we need to look at if our budget, if this budget is sustainable and that says that it is not.
So given all this, Jim, would the measure P be actually kept in taxes? Or would it still be kept under fund balance? Because I don't see where it can stay in both.
I, I don't understand what you're asking, Julia. Can you repeat that?
I don't, I don't see where you can include, and I think we, we touched on this, I think this is kind of what spurred this whole discussion, is measure P cannot be included in the fund balance reserve to show an increase and also have it up included in taxes for revenue to also show an increase.
No, that, that is correct. Like, again, this revenue is all revenues, this expense, all expenses. And then separate from that are the balances in the reserve funds. So those, those don't add together directly, but I, I do understand the point that you guys are getting to.
Right.
Well, and it all goes back to what Dan said a little bit in his first questions, you know, if a, a, all of these departments are going up over the last two years, this percent, this percent, this, this percent.
Fairness.
Can, three years, right? Can we afford that? And the answer is no. So, you know, when we, and you keep referring to closed session, you know, this conversation informs the closed session too. Would it be helpful beyond those big things if we went through some of the smaller? You know, not page by page by page, but I had a couple of points, uh, departments.
Pretty well.
Yep.
Okay.
Did you guys have anything, you know, kind of department by department that you had comments on or?
I, I had one regarding the cost of the grant writer and the consultant without having any, anything being received back. So I'd like to know if there is an option to review the cost that we pay for a grant writer to have that be reviewed, uh, maybe mid-year to see if we want to continue with that expense.
Yeah, sure, we could.
I think you had indicated something like that, Tom.
But it's included in here, Julia, somewhere that there is an intent to do that. I don't remember where I read it, but I'm pretty sure.
I didn't, I didn't, I read where, you know, to be able to consider whether we want to. I think I'm looking for something specific, I think, just by, you know, the, the middle of the fiscal year. The other, the other thing I have in these, this is, um, because we crossed over, the street enterprise funds, the project total, I didn't understand that. I'm trying to remember which page that was on.
While you're looking.
Yeah, I'll look.
Okay. Jim, do you have something or Susan or? I have kind of a few from front to back. I can start and you could pop up if you have something on that page. Does that work for you guys?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so on page, well, I, I like to, you indicated that the COLAs are two point five percent across the board, but when I did, you know, math myself, that's not what I came up with when we went through the department by department. So we do still need to discuss that.
So hang on, just, you're talking about.
The staff report mentions COLAs. I asked you a little bit ago what the COLA was and you said two point.
That's only part of the compensation.
Sure, okay, I just to, so we're still clarifying that.
It's not clarifying it, I think it's correct. It, um, so can you give me example of what you're?
Well, uh, I'll give you an example when I get to one of those pages. The organizational chart, the very beginning of the budget page, uh, just for clarification. Did we fill the police spot? Because it has five point four eight existing employees and that, that's what we would end with. So, you know, the top and bottom existing FTEs, proposed total FTEs, those numbers matched and I thought we had a vacancy right now.
Yeah, we have five point four eight approved FTEs, doesn't mean they're all occupied. There's one vacant.
So existing doesn't mean filled, it just means approved positions? Okay. The two pages from there, I lost budget pages from there, so twenty of the packet. The transfer in to the wastewater enterprise of the eight hundred and fifty, that seemed vaguely familiar, but is that Ursa income?
That's the, um, that's the Henderson underdrain project, I think.
Why is that a transfer in? At this point, ours is paying for that.
Yeah, the reserves are technically in the Ursa account.
Oh, okay, I gotcha. I don't expect an answer tonight, but there are several places through the budget, you know, we, there's MuniCode site, there's other web services, web this, web that. I have a couple year old unanswered question. Uh, I, I would like to know what Civic Plus costs, you know, compared to what we used to pay and, you know, what are, I just want to know what we're paying for.
So MuniCode is three different things. So we pay them to maintain our, um, city ordinances.
Is that not Civic Plus? Somebody else?
It's all the same company.
Okay.
So part of it is website hosting and the website itself. Part of it is agenda management software that we're using to do all the staff reporting in minutes. And then part of it is updating the city code.
What do we pay a year for all of that? What do we pay Civic Plus a year?
I mean, that's what I think you're seeing in multiple places, so that's what it is.
Right, so I, I'd like to know what we pay Civic Plus a year.
I think there was like eighty-six hundred attributed to the marketing, it looked like to me, that seemed.
We'll get to that page too. Yeah, I think that's different. I think that, uh, I, well, we'll get there in a minute. You guys stop me if we're going through pages and you have something.
Yeah.
So here's an example on page thirty-four of the packet. This is departmental expenditure count detail from the general fund. Now this is.
Which department?
I, I'm just gonna throw out one number. This is just the general, oh, I used police because they're only paid for out of the general fund. The seven hundred and seventy-two to eight hundred and forty-four is eleven percent. That's just personnel services.
So are you on this page?
I'm on page thirty-four of the packet.
There you are.
This page? Sorry.
No, it's my bad. I just need to be able to see.
Try to make it bigger.
Yeah, there. So just my own math.
So this is eight forty-four?
That's eleven percent increase.
Eight forty-four.
From seven seventy-two.
Yeah, but that includes, um, we, we get, we get estimates for, so it's all the benefits plus, plus the payroll, plus like estimates for overtime, and then if people are eligible for step increases or incentive pay, it's all, it's all in there. So there, there's a two and a half percent COLA. And that's on the base hourly rate. And then if that person has also been here for long enough that they're getting a long-term incentive, if they've, they've had, uh, education incentive or they're bilingual. So all those things add up to what the actual hourly rate becomes. And then that feeds the costs for social security and other benefits that go up.
So it's not related to? The next page, hold on.
It just feeds in.
Um, the next page.
I have, I had a couple of questions on this page.
Yeah.
What falls under the services and supplies thing? Because that one seems to be skyrocketing for police and then finance, it got kind of big too.
Yeah, I, so again, if you look at the detail for the department.
Okay.
Let's take a look at finance. So all of these things are totaled up in the, in the, uh, labor costs, right? So vacation accrual, uh, pension costs, workers, workers' comp is actually allocated out, so.
Okay, sorry.
And then the material services is this stuff. So, you know, for finance, it's mostly software and computing costs. There are some also things like utilities. Water, PG&E are allocated out to each department, like it's built in.
Okay, thanks. Finance, the, the personnel services difference is eight and a half percent and that would probably be explained by the fact that there's two half-time people in finance that don't get benefits.
There's no classic pension employees in finance, so those costs go slower.
Um, on the next page for public works personnel services, specifically in the general fund, it's down, which is great. I assume some of that is a function of less. I assume some of that is a function of less overtime that we've been trying to figure out, but. Generally, general funds specifically, didn't we put the pool and the cemetery and the store and all those things into the general fund? So wouldn't public works expense be expected to go up in the general fund? Because it absorbed those, you know, in previous budgets, we had on those horizontal sheets where you allocate everybody's time.
Yeah.
A lot of public works went into those.
We did that last year though, so the change from last year to this year. That's not new.
I thought I saw it in those last year.
Yeah, are you on this page, Claire, or are you?
Thirty-five of the packet.
Is it this page? Thirty-five of the packet.
There's no budget. Numbers on the. Can you?
The title is just Sutter Creek, City of Sutter Creek General Fund.
Think we learned something else maybe.
It's not this one.
Nope.
It is a vertical page, uh, general fund, departmental expenditure account detail.
Account number.
This particular page has public works, marketing and central services on it.
Give me a second here. Here, this, this one.
Nope.
Nope. There it is.
Yep, there you go.
Yep. So again, you're looking at this column.
Yeah, I was looking at that decrease, trying to understand why. I mean, yay, but.
But that's general fund only, right?
That's general fund only. Right. But I thought that the general, and and Tom answered my question. It was two years ago that we added those, those.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the bottom line, it's, you know, essentially flat. And mainly, we're looking at what we budgeted. So the difference, I guess, one of the differences here, and maybe it's the biggest in this department. Is what we've budgeted versus what we actually spent. And I tease Dan about it all the time, but he tends to over, overinflate his budget and then he doesn't spend it. So I think that's what you're seeing on this one. The projected 2425 is.
Oh, okay. I gotcha, I gotcha, correct. Thank you for that. Susan, you said you had things there. Okay.
Tom, you have the 54-page deal, so on page 37 of 54. Is where I want to go. This is the bottom line for the wastewater funds. Department expenditure account detail, where it totals everything up. And at the bottom, total personnel services last year. 423,000, this year 1.1 million.
So am I, am I on the right page here?
Is it supposed to say personnel?
What page are you on, Dan?
Thirty-seven of 54. In the budget packet that was sent to us, that's a 54-page packet. And this is page 37.
This page.
That's correct, huh?
Wastewater Fund.
And the bottom line, go to the bottom. There, at the cumulative total. I suppose that's supposed to say personnel services.
Can we correct that? Cause that really.
Not personal.
Yes.
If it's personal services, I get a different question. So, yeah, so I'm looking at that jump from 423 last year to 1.1 this year.
Uh, it's the other way around, right?
So projected 2425 is 432.
No, so again.
No, that's a different year.
That's a different year.
That's the year before. This is what's projected year-to-date is 432.
Yeah, so the difference is whether or not you open the packet as an HTML or as a PDF from the website.
We'll, we'll try to add numbers in the spreadsheet.
Yeah, that's from, if you do the PDF, it's 88, and if you do the HTML, then it's 54.
Right, we'll, we'll edit the spreadsheet so it has, so we'll have both numbers on the page. We can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a 50.
That'd be simple.
Well, then mine's on paper, so I screwed it all up.
The paper is from PDF.
The totals for wastewater funds. This year's, you know, last year's projected spend, 432,000, next year is 1.1 million.
Yep.
That's what I'm looking.
Big jump.
It's inexplicable to my way of thinking.
Yeah, I'm trying to look, so if you look at the top of that page, you know, breaks it out by treatment, collection, disposal. And I'm just trying to.
I seem to remember, cause there was a number, and I don't have the page, but it jumped out at me on a huge spend on wastewater. I thought it was like a capital expenditure, like 800K or something.
Right, there's this 776, this is the, the INI capital project. 120 here is kind of critical capital at the, at the plant. We did see a big increase. In services and supplies, and this is. Anticipating, kind of moving forward with the wastewater treatment plant.
Tom, I'm looking at the individual personnel services stuff, and it doesn't look like it adds up to one point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Deal.
So there's two, two, two. And then, and then it is adding in personnel costs, I think, from other departments.
But it isn't in the year-to-date?
No.
Well, that's, that's not okay.
No, if we're gonna get, cause we are anticipating a shift in the allocation of people's time.
That's my next note.
Yeah.
Is a huge shift.
Yeah, but you're right, it seems, it seems high.
Right.
So.
So just double, have somebody double-check it or double-check.
Yep.
Because that's, that's weird.
I lost track of, oops. I lost track of where we were, but on. General fund, public works, budget, capital projects at the bottom, what's the 45,000?
Hang on, I'm just trying to make sure I get this one.
Here.
Okay, so which page are you on again? Relative to where we are right now.
Well, I, I never found where Dan was talking about. I am a few pages after my last question. The general fund reports by department, so they're, okay, so that.
Aaron, maybe you can open up the PDF.
Yeah, I've got both open. If you tell me the page, I'll try to troubleshoot it.
Or this page.
The packet number is 40.
The printed one, you guys are looking at the packet numbers?
Correct. On the printed, they're looking at the PDF.
But Tom's looking at the HTML.
Correct.
Should we just all reopen the PDF and show the HTML?
Well, some people have paper.
I know, but they, they have the PDF.
The paper is the PDF.
All my notes are from the HTML.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
I tried to open the HTML and I just get the first two pages.
Yeah. So I'm going, I'm going to excuse myself. It's almost 10:30. And if we can't keep track of the pages, here's what I would like to hope. With far before June 30th is that we can all look at the same information. Updated information and be able to have the, the correct packet. With the same numbers and be able to get the information ahead of time, but. It's, it's going on 10:30 back here, so I'm going to bow out. I've made notes along the way, and Tom, I may be in touch with you the next week or so then with any of my other questions.
Yeah, Julia, I think we are all looking at the same numbers. We'll figure out the page numbering system.
Yes, that's.
You can send me your comments as soon as possible. That'd be great.
Okay, all right. Thank you and good night, y'all.
Good night.
Okay, if you're on page 46 of the PDF, that is page 29 of the HTML.
Okay, so I feel like I know this, but the capital project improvements. 45,000 for public works and the general fund. Which one was that? Bottom.
Let's see, capital projects improvement, 70030. It's the item number. Forty-five thousand.
No.
That would be streets and roads, right? Yeah.
Yeah. Um, this may be. An air conditioning project. Yeah, I think it's air, mini splits for the grammar school.
And then since, can I jump in on that? I still don't totally get why, and I know that the grammar school is really important, but what? What's like the cost benefit of putting that kind of money into it?
I mean, it's something we've been talking about. It's kind of. Self-fulfilling that it's not going to be used when it's sweltering hot. It's a great space that I think we could use, but.
For what?
For, I mean, it's being used now for community, it's like a community center, so there's yoga, there's dance classes.
Okay.
It's rentable for, you know, there's a kitchen and you can rent it out for events, but without air conditioning, it's kind of not attractive.
Yeah, I didn't realize they were, that stuff was.
We could keep it like a meat locker, like it isn't here.
I know, I was gonna say, we could save some money real quick right here.
Okay, let's, let's keep getting your feedback, I think.
Okay, the next page is marketing. I had three things. One of them was.
Which page is that now?
Just turn it, the next one, from, if you found where we were talking about the last thing, the next page, so 47 of the packet.
Okay, thank you.
And last time we met, we talked about Christmas lights. Being needed, and I didn't see him in here.
Yes, again, those. Those, those are basically moved into the public works.
Okay, that's what I figured, just checking that. I wanted to make sure they were still in the budget.
And again, I, I get, you know, changes year to year. I'm trying to get it cleaned up where it'll stabilize.
I get you. That's, that's why I had the question. I just wanted to make sure they were in there somewhere. The community promotion sponsor, 7,500. I assume in that is the visitor center. And which they had requested 5,500, and I apologize that I didn't say anything before to, to you or at any of these points. But I had hoped that this year we upped that a little bit to maybe 7,000. Because I think in the last year. They've, you know, gotten their, they've, they've shown sustainability on their own. They've gotten their nonprofit status. They've been able to have fundraisers. Obviously, it's yet another year of very dedicated volunteers. My, my own issue with giving them more money in years past was I felt like. Because if, if the, the city sustained the visitor center primarily, then it would have to be a city operation. And I didn't think that that was appropriate for us to, to do. So we're all talking about this devastating budget, but I, I would like to personally see the visitor center bumped a little bit. So bring that category up, you know, 1,500 or whatever.
Can I comment on that one?
Yep.
So, you know, I've been, been trying to go to their meetings. Obviously, they, they promote everything in Amador County. I think they're doing a good job of getting sponsorships beyond the city. And then we did just form these two business districts for marketing, the whole region. So I kind of felt like maintaining our level was, was fair. They, they weren't asking for more, so.
That sounds good. I, and I, it's just a delayed thing I've meant to say for months, so I understand that and I agree. The 8,600 internet services, is that tailored marketing?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, so, so I'd be interested too in finding out the total, cause. But that's, but I thought it's like a, has many services that we're all paying all into one, is that right?
No, this is, this is for the mark, for marketing services.
Oh, I get it. I, I thought it was like the website hosting stuff. And then what is her direction on promotion?
Did you read her report?
I did not.
So it's really laid out.
Okay, oh, no, no, I did read that.
And it's.
But I guess I was more wanting to know, like, the goal. Because I, I feel like because we collect so much of the sales tax and the TOT. And those we're saying are kind of flat, that. This is maybe is more philosophical, but I, I feel like we should really be making sure that we're bolstering the messaging.
Yeah, again, that's.
I think that's why we hired her.
It is a month-to-month contract. I think so far I've been pretty happy with what she's doing.
I think it's great. I just wanted to, I just wanted to see if that's where that was.
It's a little bit fungible time, so she's offering some design services and things, so. You know.
And then are.
If we don't think it's worth it, we can change it, but.
And then as far as the design, does the visitor center work on that or you give her direction or?
On like ads that they put. She usually sends them to me for feedback, but she sends them to a bunch of people.
Okay, cool.
She usually is doing it on her own and pulling it together at the last second, so. I think she's done a great job of getting, you know, into certain magazines and things.
Yeah, the numbers were really great, Instagram and Facebook and whatnot. Thank you.
Um, I just have the same question I always have with the insurance, and I understand. You know, we're in pool and you guys have answered it many times, but it is our job to understand. What we're paying for and if we're actually getting it and if that's what we need. So sometime in our, in our downtime. I would like to understand how that is determined better, you know, for. Number of employees or vehicles or services or the pool or police or whatever figures into there.
I mean, we've asked that, and part of it too, we don't make very many claims. The, the cities that make more claims are supposed to pay more. So we're kind of careful how we use it.
Gotcha.
Yeah, but again, this covers us for lawsuits, somebody trips and falls on the sidewalk. Other kinds of claims. So definitely think we need it.
Yeah, I think.
That includes fire insurance and that's gone, every, that's gone up for everybody.
Right.
I think it tickles our, you know, those questions because it goes up so significantly every year or the last couple of years.
When you get to the department expenditure and account detail for wastewater, let me know, will you?
I'm about done, Dan. Do you want to turn?
Oh, well. And Aaron, you can help me page 35 of 54 on HTML.
It's like four pages down from where we were.
Yeah, it's just, you could page forward about four times. So this goes. So this goes to something that Tom, you mentioned earlier, and I just want to spend a little time making sure I understand it because it's, it's about allocation really.
Fifty-two in the packet.
And so.
Fifty-two.
And so when you start with, on that page, you start with city clerk and you see that the allocation for last year was 23 and now it's 44. For the city manager, last year it was 48 and now it's 200,000. For finance, it was 48 and now it's 101,000. And it kind of continues, um, including all these, the ones that, that come next. It just seems huge. It seems more than, I mean, it's, it just really struck me.
Yeah. So I can tell you, you know, we, we, we teach weekly time cards and people, you know, put how much time they're spending on things. Again, realize we're, it's a city manager. That's now two people, not one person. So I hear you. I mean, we are spending quite a bit of time. I think once, once Arsa goes away, maybe some of the city clerk time will go away. You know, I personally have been spending quite a bit of time on wastewater. Looking down through here. And treatment, uh, treatment has been pretty flat.
Flat, yep.
Collections. I need to look at why that one's going up so much. Again, I know we're doing a lot of collections projects, but on the personnel services side.
And I guess affluent is a, a new bucket.
Yeah, this is again, pulling in the ARSA, what typically been hidden as an ARSA expense.
Yeah, right.
Other things have gone down. I mean, attorney fees. There's something flat here, but you know, I think it, I think it's gone down overall when you add. Now we have one city attorney or we used to have two attorneys.
That's one of the difficulties, Tom, is that, is that I can't, I can't really appreciate those kind of things be, because of the presentation style here. And I understand the need for this type of presentation style, but maybe as we look forward, there's a way to, to, to just simplify high level. You know, whether it's FTE by FTE or department, real department, cause like in the beginning of your six-page report or eight-page report, there's a, you know, a graph and it's got, you know, city manager at like 6% and it's $86,000. Well, what the hell is that? You know, and when we see city manager all over the place here for more, I mean, I just, yeah, there's so many ways it's sliced and diced. I, I, I don't want to go on and on about it, but as, as a council member, I, I feel like it's my job to make sure that I can analyze this stuff reasonably.
Yeah.
You know, without.
We could do some better labeling. Hopefully what was clear was the, the pages at the beginning that are called total had a general fund plus enterprise funds.
Yeah.
And then it goes into general funds and then it goes to the enterprise funds. And again, there, there, there are multiple sheets like, like this page. You know, where it, it's taking like, say the finance total budget and it's showing you the percentage and the breakdown.
Back in the.
This is a, you know, page seven of the budget. So it does this for every department. So you can see.
Right.
You know, and then, you know, like if you look at the public works on the next page, page eight, you know, you'll see, um, you see the total here.
Aaron, what is that in HTML language?
He's in HTML.
Oh, you are?
It's page eight in HTML.
Thank you. Okay.
So if you look here, like the streets.
Yeah, right.
It's all in the streets column. Parks and Rec is all in the general fund column. Pool is in the general fund. And then all the wastewater stuff is, is out here in the wastewater, you know, funds.
Right. What isn't here is last years.
Yeah, this is a detailed breakdown.
But, but.
You can see the allocations.
I, I understand that.
And then when you get to the wastewater funds, then they show comparison by year. So we were attempting to give you like.
But then you don't know, is that the whole deal or is something else sitting somewhere else allocated? That's my problem. In this, I like this on, um, seven of 54, Tom. And I just wonder if right next to the proposed budget column, you couldn't just have the actuals from last year right next to it. Just drop it in there. Because that's, that's a real compare then, right? So.
What page are you on, Dan?
Uh, seven.
Seven?
Of 54.
So seven is like 24 in the packet.
So guys, in this one, you see total allocation opportunities across the columns, right? You see the total budget, you know, department by department. So I'm looking at finance as an example. And salaries and wages are 214. And it shows where each and every one of those are allocated, which is good and that's important. What I'm suggesting is that right next to that initial column, which is the total, have the actuals from the year before, so we can compare the total cost of these departments that we're proposing as a budget with what we did last year without having to go through all this machination. And I bet that wouldn't be hard to do.
And then, but still keep the, um.
Keep, keep everything else.
The general fund with the multi, multiple years.
Sure. Keep, keep everything else. I mean, from my perspective, that solves a big problem in terms of continuity and ability to analyze and make sense of this stuff.
Yeah.
Because the, the reports that have the general fund for everybody, it don't mean a whole lot of anything. So, so little of especially personnel is in the general fund, you know, and that's the only place we could really compare.
I was trying to figure it out, Tom, but I, and I didn't see it until you showed me this page and I thought, oh, that's, that's a great place to put it from my perspective.
Of course, we're saying all this and it's probably going to be different with Tyler. Is that right?
Yeah, it's going to change completely next year.
Oh. But you can take the, the intent and build it into Tyler.
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
So, yeah, so I, I hear you guys' frustration. Want to make sure we're as prepared as possible. So are there any other? Again, I don't know if you were able to pull out a lot of the capital projects, if there were any concerns about, about the actual projects or some of the actual expenditures.
Well, I have a question. When we're looking at the kind of personnel expenditures for the wastewater thing, like one thing I've had a hard time understanding is how we're really ever going to be able to afford to build this sewer plant.
So again, we're looking. I mean, we are trying to build up some reserves now, but we would be basically bonding future rate pair payments.
To the tune of like $50 million though?
Hopefully less, but you think of it like a 30-year mortgage.
And then how do you rationalize like your time and billing it to the general fund and is it just because it's imperative? And so that's where we need to, even though it's very expensive, that's where we need to put your time?
So we actually do time sheets. I do a time sheet. Everybody.
No, no, no. I, I don't mean like I'm criticizing you for.
No, but I'm just saying it's based on the actual time or spending.
And then if we're concerned about the spend and that's what we're spending money on, like that's just what we have to do?
Well, that's just, it's kind of too, I'm confused because that's two different things. One is just an allocation. Right? And so it shows somebody like Tom and he's.
Yeah, yeah. But when we talk about, oh my gosh, this is costing so much money. Well, that's why it's costing so much money is because we're making it our priority, right?
Well, it's going to cost so much money because sewer treatment plants cost 40 million bucks.
No, I get that. But when we're talking about, okay, this is really big number. The allocation of personnel resources to wastewater.
Yeah.
That's been our, that's our priority.
That's what Tom's saying is that, yeah, that's where everybody's spending a lot of time on that.
Their time is spent on the, in working on that project. So it's a waste, it should be paid for by wastewater fund.
That's the idea.
Get that? I mean.
Yeah. So, and it, we're billing it to general fund?
No.
No.
You suck. That's where.
That's what this allocation does. It makes sure that the money comes from the appropriate bag.
So where's your concern on that, those numbers?
On the allocation? That it was so hugely increased from last year. And is everybody really? I mean, once we get this thing done, a company is going to come in and build this thing. You know, I can't imagine everybody's going to be up there watching them, right? Although, well, maybe I can. That's another story.
Yeah.
But, you know, for a period of time, it makes sense.
It's probably, you know, this year, next year.
Yeah.
Either last year or this year.
And I, and I'm.
You just mentioned you've got some meetings coming up with these companies that want to bid to go over some, I assume they have questions and details.
Yeah.
That's going to be.
That's time.
Right. But once it gets going.
Right.
I think Dan's right then. Um, but again, we are forecasting, you know, more wastewater engineering.
Right.
Quite a bit this next year.
I find it very easy to believe that you all spend that much time on wastewater. I, I wish you didn't, but you know, I, I think that.
I'm pleased that the time card thing is, is handling it, you know, correctly and accurately. And people aren't just saying, well, it's about 25% of my time. It's, you know, it's, so that's cool.
An example of that that you might not think of is like my time for an ARSA meeting. Uh, you wouldn't think the city clerk is getting charged to wastewater, but if I'm clerking the ARSA meetings, then it's probably getting charged to wastewater.
Yeah, I get that. It, it's, it matches to me. I guess that was my point is that this, these numbers are big because we're doing a huge thing.
And it makes a lot of sense. Finance, for instance, you know, that they deal with everything that walks in the front door and makes the phone ring. So, you know, it gets spread around. It, it, it makes a lot of sense to me that it's done this way. It's just hard to analyze, but I think Dan had a really good option there to just include last year's in that one column. And there isn't one of those sheets for police, but that's because it's all out of the general fund, I assume, right? Tom?
Correct. And we can talk about it tomorrow. We are looking at like similar cities.
Yep.
Some of them have their patrol officers, you know, drive by and check on the wastewater plant and stuff and they build part of it to wastewater.
I was just gonna, I knew you were, that's where you're heading. You can see it from the bridge. Every time he gets waved to the.
Park all the cars there.
If you look, uh, again, our, our current street, street fund is pretty, pretty slim. We have this, uh, Carson Drive project and a couple of other things, pretty minimal, but it's pretty much going to clear out what's there. Just again, it's not a lot of money, but I just wanted to point that out.
Right. Dan, is that sidewalk repair in the budget? It is.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull up those, those projects.
That's another, is the cost of the geotechnical investigation about the floodplain thing in the budget?
Yes.
And the new contract with M&amp;M Air, is that in the budget?
Sorry, with who?
You're proposing a new contract with the air conditioning company?
Yeah, it'd be in the O&amp;M budget though.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah. So here's the street. It's about 127,000.
Yeah.
This next year. And then, um, also like things like the, um, we are looking at some of the impact fees. So the, this was kind of a redone section towards the end. If you guys saw that in the past, they, they had reported on these AB 1600 in a total
Yeah.
fashion. You're really supposed to like break it out by, by category. So we started, started doing that.
That was a lot more clear.
Yeah. And again, that's where the, uh, the police, uh, webcams would come out of the impact fees. So we have, we have some reserves there.
Do we have anyone in the public, Aaron?
No, we do not.
And then, um, just to find it, finish off at, at the end here too. I don't know if you guys got all this, but the, uh, there are some balances in the park, parks and rec fees. And, uh, again, we, we got that Bryson Park money. So that's coming straight from that. And, uh, so really we're not spending any, anything in the park reserve other than the Bryson Park project.
Right. Yeah.
Seventy-one in the.
The last page.
And so that, um, the money for Acro, is that 112? Is that what that is?
Uh, yeah.
Of the 125? Or the 122 estimate to do?
There was, it was 112 and there was 10K from, there was a couple of other little projects and that was from what we expect to generate in kind of one or two projects.
Okay.
And.
Yeah.
I don't have it in front of me, but with regard to the pool is a loss, right?
Yeah, it's a community service. It's.
So with the Acra having the swim lessons, are they going to cut us into that?
Yeah. So I think last year we spent, again, we're also spending money on chemicals and staff that are like running the, the pool house itself. And then the contract with Acro, I think was approximately 40,000. And then, um, they paid us our share out of the revenue was about 15.
So they'll pay us this.
Yeah. So then it was that, that costs us 25,000 for the lifeguards plus the operational costs that we pay for.
So they will share the revenue from this?
They share the revenue, but doesn't cover our costs.
But the revenue would be different because they haven't done swim lessons for a little bit.
Right. But it's still, it's still negative overall.
Okay. No, I, I'm all for the pool. I don't.
Less negative than it used to be. Last year's the first time that we got the revenue from
You pushed hard on that.
passes and, um,
Yeah.
daily stuff.
Right on. Thank you.
So my notes, I have double-checked the sales tax assumptions, review the use of reserves and, um, make that clear, I guess, if we're spending down reserves to make sure we have the measure P money.
Because on that sheet, Tom, it's almost like, so you've got revenue, you've got expense, and then you've got reserves. It's almost like if you're going to spend it down there, you got to show it as an expense. It's a 75.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. The problem is it, it really is like a pool of money. We did, yeah. Grant writer review, you definitely.
Hang on. Jim had something.
Yep. Yeah. I mean, the intent of using the grant writer is to make money, not lose money. So, yeah, we will monitor that. Civic plus kind of total costs. Um, change personal to personnel.
Ew.
Look at, at the allocations and that total wastewater personnel cost number going up so much. Want, look at adding a, um, maybe previous year column on the total page. Right?
Yep.
Um, I think that's, that's it. Did you guys, anything else?
Have us all have the same page number next time.
Yeah, we're going to add a, um.
Well, if everybody has a printed, printed packet.
Well, so there is a page number in the spreadsheet, but the, um, agenda system puts it in the same place. So if I move the spreadsheet page number to the middle.
Oh.
Or if you, I could open, if you download the, I could just open the same, then it matches the printed. I've got both too. But I did, that's, yeah, whatever's easy.
I'm the problem.
We'll also just make sure that the background document has a page number on it so that either way it should have a number.
Cool.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So again, high level. Sorry, we're going to have the special meeting into June. We'll have our closed session, but, um, you know, right now you guys aren't really giving any specific direction to necessarily change anything.
Well, yeah, I, I, I feel like, um, you know, the, the things you're going to clarify there, I'm, I'm still looking at page two of the budget packet. And it looks like what I'm looking at is a not balanced budget. Where we take
If you take the five hundred and seventy-nine thousand of measure P money.
Seven hundred and twenty-three.
Well, five seventy-nine is for the four quarters. Projected for the four quarters. Right? Hundred and forty-fourth, hundred and forty-four thousand plus five seventy.
Seven. In the reserves.
That's right here.
Okay.
But the five hundred and something is right there. Right?
I believe so.
Yeah, and so
So when I, when I do the math, it says we're, we're spent two hundred and eighty-seven thousand of the measure P money before we spent any of it on growth. That's, but I, I maybe I'm missing some.
It's what it looks like, you know, whether you call it the measure P money or you call it, we're spending out of, we're spending that much out of reserves to balance the budget and leaving that much money in measure P.
Well, and then here's the trouble, we're not giving any direction of where to cut from the budget. Cause if we don't want to dip into that, we got to cut
We have a line for
Thousand dollars.
For HVAC at the, uh, grammar school.
Yeah, it's like forty thousand dollars.
Oh, forty thousand? Oh, I thought it was a really big number.
No.
Okay.
And again, I guess the other conversation is, um, what is the target for the general fund reserve? You know? So, you know, we, we don't want to spend one-time money. But again, we are building up that general fund reserve. That's, that is ongoing money. I mean, the sales tax, property taxes every year type of funds, so.
And is that our goal? Are we going to try and find, make up that two hundred thousand? Is that where we want to come back with next time or are we comfortable with this?
Yeah, because I'm not a magician. You're not going to be able to. I mean, we can format it differently. We can, but Jim, like you said, it's, it's almost three hundred thousand bucks that
Maybe more, maybe, maybe about four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand, that'd be, that we'd be shy, we'd be overspending in regular expenditure, having nothing to do with the reserves.
That's what I see.
Yeah, no, you're right. And so I don't think we're in a position to say, cut the budget by four hundred thousand dollars. I, I don't, personally, I don't feel like I want to do that sitting here right now. It seems to me the spends that we're doing are conservative. I'm just not sure about that revenue again, Tom, to Claire's point early on. Are we going to be adding two percent to actuals? So we need to know all that before because if that's going on, then we really do have a problem. If, if we're adding two percent to what we hoped we would get.
And didn't get.
Didn't get. That's not going to be okay. Then we really do have to
Which means you might have to bring a very different budget back on the thirtieth, which means we might not approve it on the thirtieth. So we're going to have to understand that it could go into July. And to Dan's point that he's okay with the spend, I'm not entirely sure I'm okay with the spend because I do not understand until we're shown exactly what the increases are for salaries and wages. And I guess that's a closed session thing, but I'm not sure I'm okay with that yet, given a budget where we're looking at spending three hundred thousand in reserves.
I, I agree.
Because if we do have to look at cuts, you know, if we come back and find out that our revenue is over projected, you know, that's going to, we're going to have to find them somewhere.
Yep.
It's going to impact everything.
Okay, thank you guys for your feedback.
Let's see.
Okay. Mayor and council member reports. Do you guys want to take a quick break? You good?
I'm okay.
Finish the end. Okay. Mayor and council member report, Susan?
I have nothing to report.
Dan?
ACTC situation is in flux. Tom, I'll just wait to report on any of that because it's kind of going here and there unless you instruct me otherwise.
Yeah, sounds good.
We'll just wait on that. That's it, that's all.
I'm going to pass and we'll give Jim a chance when he comes back, if that's okay. Is that?
Do you have any comments, questions on the monthly updates?
Is there a city attorney's report?
Nothing to report.
Future agenda items? Hope not.
I see we're doing some work to get some of that, um, updates on the enforcement with the situation up the hill here.
Yeah.
Um, did I see a for sale sign on that property?
I don't think so. Did you?
I may have.
It's maybe next to it, that woman that came in.
It's the house, the house next to it's for sale.
Okay. I saw that one day going by, I thought, wait a minute. No.
Did you want to buy it?
Yeah.
On the staff reports, um, thanks, Dan, for responding to that lady with this building and the air conditioning and all that. I'm sure she appreciated that.
Yeah.
Also, on the public work staff report, during your executive summary, within your executive summary, um, you refer to a staff of five point five people. You've got six point five people. Don't forget yourself. And then the fifth from the last bullet on affluent, the water board sent a request to perform daily flow level measurements. So we're back to, are you going to let us know Thursday or did you want to? So is that, I, I know you had talked to them and Corey had talked to them and does that mean there's a answer? Right here.
I would say there is almost an answer. I had more questions back to him, but I never got anything back. Um, so it's still kind of in flux, but he, the water board pretty much told us that until, until we get a flow meter in at Preston Forbay, that we have to do daily readings out there. So it's not that big of a deal right now because we're already doing pool readings. So we're already out there doing that stuff. Um, but yeah, we have to go out there seven days a week.
Are we installing a flow meter at Preston?
We don't have a plan for that. Well, we're, we're working on that.
Okay.
I, I have a flow meter. We're seeing if we can actually use it for the Preston flow meter, the Preston Forbay. Um, so we're, we're in the middle of that right now.
Okay, cause that, all of that would, you know, in, inform this budget we just went through, right? Either the flow meter or somebody working on the weekends.
Yeah.
That was my question, is, is all that stuff that
It's, it's very much in flux right now, so I, I, I don't have a, a full answer yet.
That's a budget risk. You know, so maybe, Tom, when we come back in a couple of weeks, we can have a general estimate and where are we on any of that stuff?
Yeah.
From Public Works.
I appreciated seeing Christian's report. I thought that was great. Jim, we sort of skipped you. Did you have a mayor and council member report? Nope. Okay. Anybody else? Anything else?
One thing, Tom, in Aaron's report from planning, she continues to, um, refer to that project as the Gold Rush Ranch project.
Yeah.
That should change. It's a bad idea for a lot of reasons.
Okay, anything else going once, going twice? We're going to, um, close the open session? Take a recess?